Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Regular meeting, City Hall, March 7th, 2023, at 4:30 PM. We're going to start out with Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown to lead us, and she has a guest to introduce as well.
Thank you, Mayor. As we begin, March is Women's History Month, and I want to invite Reverend Melanie Samuels Black to give our invocation. Reverend Samuels Black has served as the pastor of St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church for the last six years. She is a proud 1999 graduate of WKU. Along with her ministerial work, she is also the Quality Information Coordinator at Fruit of the Loom. She is married to Herbert Black and has two daughters, Mercedes, who is a Bowling Green and U of L grad, and Mia, who is currently a sophomore at Bowling Green High. The Reverend also has many volunteer roles in our community. You may find her at Kroger helping her Girl Scout troop, selling cookies. She's a scout leader for Troop 1296 here in Bowling Green. And in that role, she also serves as a delegate to the Kentucky Conference of Kentuckiana Girl Scouts and serves on the Board of Directors for the Girl Scouts of Kentuckiana. And she's also a member of and serves as the Vice President of Membership, Recruitment, and Youth for the local grad chapter of upsilon lambda zeta of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Reverend Samuels Black, thank you so much for investing in and inspiring so many young women in our community. And will you bless us by leading us in our prayer before we get started this afternoon?
Let us pray. Holy One, you know the names of all names. You're the Spirit of life. You're the Spirit of love, and you're the Spirit of this community. We come right now asking the blessing upon this meeting this evening, oh God. Asking that where we live, where we work, and where we play may be a blessing to others, oh God. Help us as leaders not to always ask, "How can we fix it?", but first ask and learn from it. How can we change it? How can we listen more? Remind us, because we sometimes forget that we need to take time out for others. Lord, I ask right now that you come before this council as they make the decisions for this community and all that is happening in this world, oh God. Lord, right now, stand fast with those that is in the leadership roles, oh God. Let them be mindful of those that have lesser, of those that are weak and poor, those that have need, oh God. Lord, right now, I ask you to remind them in their midst of their lives, oh God, that even though there may be some that are different than from us, oh God, that they look to them in their times of need. Grant them, oh God, the wisdom and the courage to know and to do what is right and true. May they speak when they need to be spoken out, and may the patience of them be ever known and present upon them. May we look at the community as one and be guided by the Spirit that God has put before us. This we ask, in the mighty name of God. Amen.
Reverend, and if you all remain standing with me as we recite the pledge to the flag together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. Thank you, Reverend Samuels Black. Appreciate you. I'm going to ask our city manager at this time, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I do, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our city employees that responded on Friday and Saturday to the windstorm damage around town. Our public works guys were out there late Friday night, out there Saturday, too, working on cleanup and traffic signals. Our police officers, our fire department was, every station was called out Friday afternoon, and we called in backups, and it was a busy day. But everybody did a great job, I thought, and worked timely and safely, and I just want to thank them for all their work, so. Secondly, I just want to remind everyone of my usual comment. If you want to make public comments, please sign the register in the back corner of the room, and we'll take up your public comments at the end of the regular session. That's all I have, Mayor.
While we have a captured audience, Mr. Mizel, could you remind, I know we have a PSA out there on the pickup for vegetation, could you give us an update on that?
We do. We think there is more pickup that's going to happen in the county than the city. It's kind of flipped this time from the December 2021 disaster. But for now, everyone just needs to put their minor amounts of debris, vegetation out on the curb, and those will soon be picked up. If it's under 50 pounds and no longer than four feet and no bigger than six inches in diameter, Scott Waste will consider that as bulk, and that would be picked up along with their garbage can. You can also call Scott Waste and schedule a bigger pickup. But I think help is on the way. The county is probably looking at an outside contractor. Still don't know for sure, but that's to be determined. But we think we'll be able to handle ours in the city with our public works department picking up some extra. And we've got two big knuckle boom trucks that will hold quite a bit, that we'll take to our landfill, and we'll grind it up and burn it and dispose of it. So that's kind of where we're all right now. This was different than December 21. That was a five or six-square-mile path that had a lot of severe damage. We did have some structural damage out in the county, some in the city, as you saw, some signs and stuff. But we feel like the majority of this is going to be more vegetation, and it's going to be a majority more in the county because it was a countywide, affected every part of the county, the 70 mile an hour winds and did the damage. So that's kind of what I know as of now. I do have, is Matt Powell still in here? Okay, he stepped out. So that's the update as of now. Just stay tuned, and the county will probably be likely coming out with more information soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Parigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Next is our approval of minutes, regular meeting, February 21st, 2023. Any discussion?
Some move?
Some move? Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Parigin. No discussion. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Parigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-39.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Michael Chamblyss and Hannah Whitson to the position of Police Cadet II in the Police Department. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We have two candidates for Police Cadet II before you tonight, hopefully that will be in the next class of at police, at the Police Department, Police Academy. And I'd like to ask Lori Gray to come up and make the recommendation. Lori? Lori's one of our HR managers. Lori Gray.
Good evening. I'm here this afternoon to recommend the approval of the appointments of Hannah Whitson and Michael Chamblyss to positions of Police Cadet II. We recruit this position year-round, and both applicants, like Mr. Mizel said, will attend the Class V of the Bowling Green Law Enforcement Academy that begins at the end of April. Hannah Whitson is currently a Police Cadet I with the Bowling Green Police Department. She graduated from South Warren High School and is currently attending Western Kentucky University, pursuing degrees in criminology and sociology. Michael Chamblyss graduated from Trinity Catholic High School in Oakwood, Florida, and Central Florida College. He served in the US State, you know, I'm sorry, the United States Marine Corps from January 2018 through August 2022. He has an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice Technology and Law Enforcement Certificate from the Florida Police Academy. Both are here in attendance tonight. Do you have any questions of me?
Can we introduce, could they stand up?
Yes, they can please stand up. I know Michael has family with him, and Hannah's here. Yes. Oh, she's here, okay.
All right.
Okay, her mother's here.
Would family please stand up as well? All right, well, we thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you, congratulations for going to Cadet I to Cadet II, and soon to become the BGPD that you're going to, in your future. So we need you, and we're proud of you. Commissioners, let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Parigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations. All right, thank you all. Municipal Order Number 2023-40.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Kyle Williamson to the position of Electrical Inspector in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So we've had an opening in our Neighborhood and Community Services Department for Electrical Inspector. Been looking a little while for this one, and we think we found the right person. I'd like to ask Lori to step back up and make the recommendation.
Again, so we are recommending the appointment of Kyle Williamson to the position of Electrical Inspector in the Building Division of Neighborhood and Community Services Department. We recruited for this position both internally and externally. Kyle graduated from Logan County High School and South Central Kentucky Community and Technical College. He has 16 years of experience in the electrical field, and he has been a master electrician for over five years. He is with us this evening and has family with him. And let me know if you have any questions.
All right, Kyle, would you stand up? And introduce your family?
Yeah. Well, I take a second. One, two kids, mother, mom, and brother. Brother, mom, and then my father, very much.
It's a good-looking family you have with you tonight, so. All right, Commissioners, are you ready to make this happen? All right, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Parigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Kyle. Number 2023-41.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Tanner South to the position of Golf Professional in the Parks and Recreation Department. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sue Parigin, second by Commissioner Melinda Hill. Mr. Mizel.
We have a vacancy in our golf course division, golf division, and I'd first like to thank Chris Kendall, who has resigned and is pursuing a different career now. I'd like to thank Chris for his service at Paul Walker and Hopson Grove Golf Courses, all of his years of good service at those two nine-hole courses. And I'd like to ask Erin Holesy, our HR Director, to come up and make a recommendation for his replacement.
Great, good afternoon. So I would like to make the recommendation to appoint Tanner South to position of Golf Professional. Tanner's with us tonight. Currently, Tanner does already work in the Crosswinds, in a part-time capacity. He has been mentored over the last few years by Phil Jones, who is our golf professional there. And Phil has professionally invested in Tanner to be ready for this moment. So when this vacancy became open, we only took applications that were internally. We did not do an external search here, knowing that we had a pretty good candidate within the city. Tanner attended Greenwood High School. He graduated from Center College with a bachelor's degree in economics and finance. He's also done an internship with Trace Diecast. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Tanner, do you have some folks with you tonight?
I do. This is my wife Megan, my mom Regina, and my dad Tim.
Well, we're happy that they came tonight. All right, Commissioners, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Parigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Tanner. Thank you all. Ordinance Number BG 2023-4, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedules F for Fire and P for Police of the city of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2023. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Several weeks ago, I sent you all an email to follow up from our retreat regarding our police and fire pay schedules. Sent that out, and we were needing to adjust our starting rate for both the Fire Department and the Police Department. And before you tonight is that new classification pay schedule. And I'd like to ask Erin Holesy to come up and introduce this and answer any questions you might have along, and I'll try to help as well.
Great, thank you. So I am about to present and ask for your approval for adjusting our police and fire pay schedules more than the 6.5 COLA for this year. First, I would like to note the timing is a little bit unusual. This is not normally when I come before you and make recommendations to pay schedules. We normally do that in June. But we are coming to you because we've been working this fall and winter with the police and fire chiefs on some plans, and we're really excited about them. And so, and we're about to kick off a fire recruitment, so tomorrow, in fact. And we wanted to be able to use these rates and able to kick off that recruitment. So that's a reason for the timing. I want to say a couple words for those in the community who may be questioning this, who might be asking why more? 6.5 seems fair. And so I think it's really easy to talk about and to say over and over, we love our police department, we love our firefighters. But I'd like to share a couple of stories. And a lot of times, we show videos of police officers, they're playing basketball with kids, we're showing pictures, we're flipping pancakes in Parks and Rec. But the reality is, is that a police officer's job is very dangerous. Recently, we had a lot of injuries to our police officers when they were dealing with people who were resisting arrest. This past September, for example, one of our officers entered Life Skills to serve some papers. She was punched in the face, she had her hair pulled, and she was held in a chokehold until someone was able to come to her aid seconds later, thankfully, very quickly. In addition to that, some other injuries sustained from resisting arrest was an injury to an arm, an eye infection from bodily fluids being flung towards the officer, an officer being kicked in the face, a knee injury while chasing someone resisting arrest, and a wrist strain due to another combative arrestee. Most of us love the police because they make us feel safe. But there's a lot of non-law-abiding citizens who fear the police. And our police officers carry guns, and they carry handcuffs, and they have the legal right to take life and liberty. And they take that responsibility very seriously. But for that, I would like to remind people why we are requesting the types of funds that we are requesting here tonight. In addition to that, I had the honor of being invited to our Fire Department's annual awards ceremony, and I heard some amazing stories of heroism during that meeting. In one run last year, we had a crew of firefighters that happened to be in the exact right place at the right time. They were even able to hear the alarms going off in a factory after a woman's hand was amputated. After they were able to apply a tourniquet and stabilize the patient, they continued to do the lockout-tagout procedures. They recovered her hand, which was later successfully reattached. In January of last year, there was a structure fire on 12th Avenue. At 6:00 AM, our crew from Station 1 was there in 3 minutes and 58 seconds. They quickly went into the home, and they found the homeowner who had gone back into the structure to recover something, and he had succumbed to smoke inhalation. They were able to pull him out and do CPR, and he was able to be saved. Last year, the trans park firefighters responded when a 9,000-pound steel coil fell on an employee's leg. With the help of EMS, they were able to stabilize that patient, and he survived. Our public safety departments are there when we need them, and for this, I'm willing to ask for your support, I'm willing to ask for the community's support to raise the starting pay of a police officer to $60,000 and the starting pay of a firefighter to $54,000. In addition to that, we've made some other adjustment to the schedules, and you'll see those in your packets. Please let me know if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions, Erin, but I know we talked about this at the retreat, and I know since this commission has been in place as long as I've been this mayor, we've had a lot of vacancies for our Police Department. And I know that has continued. I know the recruiting has helped, but this will go a long ways. It puts our money where our mouth is because community safety is paramount to our community. It's what holds up our order in our community, and I wholeheartedly agree with this recommendation.
I want to echo that and just thank you so much for sharing some of those stories. Our public safety, police officers and our firefighters, the fact that they kiss their kids and their loved ones goodbye every time they go to work, not knowing if they come back, that is due our very best back to them and their families for willing to put their life on the line every day. And so thank you for advocating and making it possible. I know it's a team effort with budgeting and figuring all the little steps out, but to get closer and closer to making sure that not only on top of worrying about their own safety, but also are they even making enough to make ends meet with the salaries we were giving them? And so I'm grateful to see that we're getting closer to that, as $60,000 is what it takes to just be a family of four in Bowling Green. That's pretty much the bare minimum you can make and make that happen. So I'm grateful that we're getting closer to that with our firefighters' starting position and our getting there for our police officers. One other thing, I know that our firefighters, folks may not know that they have an additional risk, and that so many of our things inside of our home, when they catch fire, produce carcinogenic fumes. And that means that a firefighter's life is potentially shortened due to higher cancer risk. And I just, you all deserve our very best, and I'm grateful that we're getting closer to that. And so again, I just want to thank you for allowing us to do this in this small way of having to adjust these salaries to invest and to give back to our police officers and firefighters.
I want to thank you as well. Like Erin has said, the mayor has said, and Commissioner Beasley Brown has said as well, you guys put your lives on the line all the time, whether you're the Police Department or the Fire Department. But these raises, it also makes them more comparable, so we don't lose individuals. We're becoming more comparable with Owensboro. We're becoming more, you know, our pay is starting to become on par with Louisville and Lexington, cities that, for us to be the third city in, you know, largest city in Kentucky, we've got to take that into account. When you hear these stories, it is heartwarming and stuff. And it's almost like, you know, these are the things that they go through every day, you know? And I hear about it even before you even brought it up, because I'm a lawyer. So I see these things that we have that's in place, and we know that sometimes there are fire departments, firemen and women, and also police officers who don't make it back. And what it is, is make sure that, we're making sure that they're going to be taken care of, their families are going to be taken care of, they're going to basically put their life on the line. And I believe you said it, they don't know if they're going to be making it back that same day. They could be kissing their loved ones, you know, goodbye that day and not knowing if they're going to come back. So these things is that we need, and these things that our police officers and our Fire Department deserves. So I appreciate you guys just doing everything you have done.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing the city of Bowling Green to be leaders in this area and to show everyone the value of these individuals.
No other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Parigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, Municipal Order Number 2023-42.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting annual OnBase content management software maintenance through a sole source through Image Soft Inc. of Royal Oak, Michigan, in the amount of $54,943.29.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
We use a software system called OnBase here for records retention and document management. They are a sole source in this product, and we are coming to you tonight to re-up with them for $54,943. This is a critical, critical piece of software for us. Like I said, it's for document management and electronic forms. We've developed some electronic workflow now where we don't have a lot of papers floating around. It's all digital through this system, and I'd like to thank our IT department for all the work they do in building those forms and implementing that, making us leaner and more efficient. But this software here is critical. This is our annual maintenance, where this vendor will provide us any solutions we need for phone support, by phone support, upgrading, assistance, all that kind of stuff. So this is just an annual contract for $54,943.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None at this time. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Parigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, Municipal Order Number 2023-43.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of a contract with US Bank to provide banking services for an additional year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Parigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Back in 2018, we went out for proposals for bank services, and we got two responses, one being US Bank. They were, they were given the bid award for five years with an option to renew for three additional one-year periods. We are coming to you tonight, recommending that we do exercise that first one-year extension of banking services, and they are providing us with great service, as they always have. They have given us more automation, technology advances. We have two lockbox systems with them that collects our major revenue sources, along with ACH, positive pay, wire transfers, you name it, we have it set up with them. So recommending that we continue that, that relationship, and I'll hand it off to Katie if she has any additional comments, and she can answer any questions you might have.
Questions? It's time, roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Parigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, Municipal Order Number 2023-44.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting negotiations after sealed bidding for bid number 2023-33 for the construction of Fire Station 8 from Sunbelt Construction Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $4,160,000. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Parigin, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So the long wait is over for the trans park fire station. We've been waiting for this for a while. We did get bids, original bids came in back in February 15th, and we got four bids. They were all over budget. And so we decided to enter into competitive negotiations with the bidders. And so we met with them a week later, said, "What can we do to reduce the cost on this fire station?". I'd like to thank Dave Hayner, Chief Brooks, for leading that conversation. I was in there briefly and out, but they did all the legwork and the heavy lifting to try to whittle this thing down. So we allowed all four of them to rebid, and three of them came back with a second bid, and we came back with, the lowest bid was from Sunbelt Construction, $4,160 to build the trans park. And as you know, we've got another item on the agenda. We'll be getting a million five towards the fire station and grant. So $4,160 minus the 1.5 will give us our difference that we'll need for station number eight. And so Chief Brooks is here, Dave Hayner's here, for any questions you might have on this bid or this proposal. But we are looking forward to getting started on station number eight in the trans park. Land was donated, as you remember, by the ITA. That's roughly two acres right there on 6880 across from BG Metalforming. So it's a really good location for us with free land.
Great, good work on the negotiations. So thank you for your time and energy on that and the grant as well. Mr. Cook. Comments, questions?
Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-45.
Municipal Order Expressing the Desire and Intent of the City of Bowling Green to Finance Costs Related to the Construction and Reconstruction of Two Fire Stations in an Amount Up To $10 Million.
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This piece, item here before you is what I'll call a safety net. If we, if and when we get bids for the station five reconstruction and the, the training center along with station eight and the costs are more than we, we think, we need to establish this intent to finance to cover any costs we might incur in case we want, want to issue debt or issue bonds later, we can count those costs that we, we incur upfront. So, Katie came up with, with this. I thought it was an excellent idea. It's, it's IRS required in order for us to, to count it as tax exempt and to cover any upfront costs that we incur that we might want to get reimbursed for later with, with the debt issuance. I'm going to hand it off to Katie to kind of explain maybe where, where she thinks we're at and what we're looking at with this.
So, in the FY '23 budget, AD had over...
Katie.
Sorry. Thank you. In the FY '23 budget, we had over $19 million set aside. We knew we were going to have to finance a portion of that. I just didn't know how much. You all had made a decision a few months ago to allow 10 million of the ARPA money to be used for the training center, which is very helpful. But I still don't know where we stand in terms of the bids for the Northside Fire Station Reconstruction Project. Right now, what we're looking at is Fire Improvement Fund to pay for both of the fire stations. And then, the training center would ultimately be paid for the, through the ARPA funds and then some general fund assistance as, as needed. But the Fire Improvement Fund just doesn't have fund balance to cover a significant amount of cash payout. So, if we use that particular fund to help pay for these fire station constructions, then we would need to finance that debt. And I'm like, I would like to keep it within the 10 million bank qualified amount, which allows us to get the best interest rate possible. That doesn't mean we might not have other things, you know, coming forth that we could throw into a, a permanent bond issue, but this is just specifically right now talking about the fire stations. But that's what we're, we're looking at. We can start out with some cash to start with the trans park station. Certainly, we have that additional 1.5 million coming from the state. But again, at some point, I'm going to run out of cash and I'm going to need to be able to, to finance the, the further construction of this.
I'm sorry, but I'm kind of confused. I understand we gave the 10 million and I thought that was going to cover the majority of the cost. That was the...
No, that was just the training center.
Okay. So, if that's that, then we have the 19 million and we just approved the 4.1 minus 1.5. How can, what you just said, we have 29 millions. We have 19 million and then...
The 19 million included financing.
Oh.
About 14 million. So, because of the ARPA money, that's now down to 4 million, but it's still unknown yet because these budget figures are not reality, unfortunately, in terms of what we're getting back for construction costs.
So, what cash do we have on hand? We actually have? How much do we have?
We have about 4 million.
That's it?
Yes. And none of that actually is in Fire Improvement Fund. That's all general fund.
State, to, to give you an idea about inflation, station eight, cost per square foot was over $500. So, it's, it's uncontrollable.
What was station seven around about per square foot?
350 a square foot is what...
So, we went from about 350 to 500 square foot in a few years. That's significant. Thank you. Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Katie. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-46.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of a Grant Application for Funding Through the 2022 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in an Amount Up To $4,876,380.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
As you all know, we have applied for the staffing for adequate fire and emergency responses, the SAFER grant before. We did not make the cut last year, but we are wanting to resubmit again this year. And we want to go for the 15 new firefighters that we will need at the trans park station. This grant would cover payroll for three years if we were to get it for those firefighters at station eight with no match required. This is an unbelievable grant. You see the breakdown by year totaling the $4,876,380. That's salary and benefits. So, we want to apply for this. We're hoping things will be different this year. Nick, Nick has, Nick and Chief Brooks have looked at this from different angles and studied other cities that were, were awarded last year. And hopefully, we're going to be able to improve our chances this year and see what happens. So, but like your, like to get your permission tonight to send this off and apply for this $4.8 million SAFER grant for the fire department.
Well, concurrents?
Nick is here, Chief Brooks is here can answering your questions you might have.
Commissioners? All right. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-47.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of a 2023 Grant Application to the Kentucky 911 Services Board for Emergency Communications Recording Equipment in an Amount Up To $386,740.26.
So, moved.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This is a, another excellent grant from the Kentucky 911 Services Board. We would like to use this 386,740 if we were to get it for emergency communications recording system at, at police 911. This records calls, stores them, retains them for future use if we need them. This would be a, a total upgrade of our existing software and servers that are kind of going out of, out of date and would, would handle a lot of our radio traffic, phone calls and that receives, are received at the 911 center. Chief Delany is here can answer any questions about the operations of this thing. Nick Cook, of course, is here can answer any questions about the, the grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel.
And there is no, no local match required on this one either. It's a really good grant.
Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-48.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of a 2023 Grant Application to the Kentucky 911 Services Board for 911 System Phone Dispatch Console Equipment in an Amount Up To $45,675.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
We have an opportunity here for another grant. This is for equipment for the dispatch center. We would like to win this 45,000. It would require a match, but the only reason it requires a match is, is in your last paragraph there, there is a grant cap of $6,500 per console, dispatch console. And those things are $22,000 apiece. So, that does require a match to get up to the 22,000. These would be integrated with our, our new system that allows texting to our 911 at no additional charge and all would be compatible with our, our system. Chief Delany is here can answer any of your questions and, but this one would require a grant if we were to get it, but it would offset quite a bit of the cost.
Mizel, questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-49.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Acceptance of an Amended Award and Contract for the Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Community Project Fund from the Kentucky Department for Local Government in the Amount of $1,500,000.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
Mentioned this just a while ago. We were, we were able to, to grab another $500,000. Nick got a call from the Kentucky CDBG CV office with, with funds of, that were available 500,000. And Nick was quick, quick to the draw and said absolutely. And so, we would like to add these to the million dollars that we've already received and put this toward station eight in the trans park, as I mentioned earlier, and would like your permission to, to, to accept this.
Great. Commissioners, none? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-50.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Acceptance of an Amended Award and Contract for Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Housing Funding from the Kentucky Department for Local Government in the Amount of $1,500,000.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This is another $500,000 amendment to a grant of a million dollars that we received not too long ago that we gave to Live the Dream to build some affordable homes. When they bid that out, costs were obviously higher than expected and needed some additional funding. So, again, Mr. Cook was able to find this additional monies from the CDBG cares money in the amount of 500,000. We would like to amend our agreement with Live the Dream, give this 500,000 to go toward their affordable housing project. They have contributed 300,000 in private financing as well to be able to build these. I think there's nine, thank you Brent, nine new housing units in Bowling Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Commissioners?
Can you just refresh me about where the location of these affordable housing units are going to be?
So, we will have one triplex located at the corner of Ragland and Graham over there at the Housing Authority. Then you'll have a duplex built off of Brownslock Road. And then, you'll have two duplexes built off of Old Baron River Road, all on lots owned by Live the Dream.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nick. All right. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-51.
Municipal Order Authorizing Acceptance of a Grant in an Agreement from the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for Transportation Alternatives Program Funds in the Amount of $1,600,000 for the College Street Pedestrian Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
So, moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
So, as you can see, tonight is grant night. Tonight's meeting has been brought to you by Nick Cook. So, this is, I feel like we've done this one before. I feel like this, this is deja vu, but this is the million six that we're getting for the College Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Melissa Kansler, our city engineer is also here with us tonight. Been working on this, this plan. And this is basically a TAP grant from the Transportation Cabinet. We need to match this with $400,000, but I'll, I'll, I'll do that in a heartbeat to get a million six. And so, $750,000 of this $2 million project will be going toward repairs and, and minor fixes to the bridge itself. And then, another million 250 is estimated to be what, what it's going to cost to, to remove the lead paint and repaint the bridge and make it look nice. So, again, Melissa is here. This is an agreement with the, with the Transportation Cabinet in your packets. Melissa or Nick can answer questions on this grant or on this project if you have any.
He does on finding it. It's a great match as well. Commissioners?
Is timeline update on this one if we think we'll get that one completed?
This project is fully designed, so really, as soon as we get this agreement signed and sent back and approved by the state, we should be going out for bid very soon.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-52.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Acceptance of an Award and Contract for Homeland Security Grant Funds Through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the Purchase of Security Surveillance Equipment for the Information Technology Department in the Amount of $109,526.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
Another good grant, Homeland Security Grant of 109,526. No grant match required. And we'd like to use this if we were to get it to replace 56 cameras around town, police department, parks, some of our buildings down here. Also, would be, would get a, a new network video recorder switch and what they call 37 transition network switches, whatever they are. So, where's Danita when I need her? Danita. Uh, Danita can answer details on this project, but what we, we've got what, close to 500 cameras maybe now around the city? So, be careful what you're doing. So, no, I'm just kidding. They, they've come in handy with police investigations and very useful pieces of equipment and some, some need replacing. We'd use this money to replace 56 of them if we get it.
Can I say something there for, for the record?
We got it. Sorry. We're accepting it.
Yeah, we got it. But for the public...
Thank you, Katie.
We don't have people that monitor these cameras all the time. I don't want folks to...
That was a bad joke.
I, it wasn't even, I just want people to know that, that we're not paying people to monitor cameras around the city. We only use them in, in the backside of something that we need to know.
The challenge is all the storage with these cameras to be able to look back when we need them.
Commissioners? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. That's the finest work of Nick. So, right, thank you, Nick.
He's a Nick.
Municipal Order Number 2023-53.
Municipal Order Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Lease Agreements for Units Located at 319 East 10th Avenue.
So, moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So, I believe Hillary had a, a family, death in the family, so she could not be with us tonight. But she sent you an email, I believe, yesterday to update you on this item. As you know, we did take over the White Building, closed on it last week, I believe, or week before, I can't remember. We do have tenants, two residential tenants in there and two commercial or business tenants. And we need to just re-up the leases between, make them between the city and these tenants and before you deny our, those lease agreements. We are still waiting on the Master Commissioner Office lease, but we'll get that fairly soon. And I would like to go ahead and get your permission to execute that when we get it and move forward with these leases. Continue. We're not changing anybody's rent. We're just establishing, establishing a new agreement with, as, as the new landlord.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions from our commissioners at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty-two-three dash three, second reading and is binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing zero point one six six acre from RM three Townhouse Multi-Family Residential to RM four Multi-Family Residential located at thirteen oh one Indianola Street presently owned by Portals Rentals LLC.
I'll move.
Second.
By Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This was a five and oh from our commissioners at the last meeting. Are there any questions or comments at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Jackson, will you please check for public comments? While we're waiting, our next scheduled meeting will be March twenty-first at twenty twenty-three.
Jennifer, I know you already know this, but I'll, um, welcome you to the podium. Um, we have up to five minutes. I'll let you know around three. Thank you.
Okay. Um, right now, the drop-in center is being established, so that's a plus, but that is not gonna be done until June. It's not gonna be done for a minute. So we still need help, and you know what? Um, Joseph in the Bible, okay? Joseph in the Bible fought all, you know, and he, he thought, if he thought it was crazy not to listen to God, you know, then he didn't do it, but he did, and he won, you know, and I'm just asking you to find it in your heart to help the homeless, 'cause the room in the inn is gonna be ending, so we need help. So, and then on, on top of it, Salvation Army will be catering more people, so they need help. They both need help, and see, Goodwill needs help too. So these three organizations are the ones that really are helping this community. One is Salvation Army, two, the Room for N, and three, Goodwill. And I'm not asking a lot, I'm just asking you to find it a way to help the people until the drop-in center will be established, and they're going to establish it. You know, they're in the process, they're cleaning it out, they're doing all that, so it's only about time, but the problem is, we don't have anything, we don't have anything until then, so we do need help. So, and I know I'm talking about God and stuff, but I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is Joseph, listen to God, and I'm just asking you to listen to your heart and do something. At least extend it until they build. Talk to them, talk to the Room for N, ask them what, what we can do to help. That's all I'm asking, so.
Thank you, Jennifer. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance tonight. This concludes our meeting. Good evening.